Great, thank you.
Welcome to the budget.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our May 3, 2022 special city council meeting. In the interest of government transparency with regards to deliberations and decisions made by the city council in according to open meeting law, since this meeting was posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is recorded by video and audio and will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. Like to do attendance of the city councillors right now. Councillor Jason Grow, councillor Scott Memard, councillor Tracy O'Neill, councillor Jeff Worthley, councillor Sean Nolan, councillor Frank Majota, councillor Tony Gross, and councillor Jamie O'Hara. And my name is Val Gilman. I'm the council president and ward four city councillor. We also have some members of staff here tonight. We have our mayor Greg Verger. Welcome, mayor. We have Jill Cahill, our CAO. We have John Dunn, our CFO. We have Kenny Costa, our auditor, and we have our city clerk, Joanne Sinos. So I believe we have all nine members of the city council here. And we have two orders of business tonight. The first is-
Madam President, I'm sorry to bother you. I just got a text that the link may be expired again that's on the website. Although we have one attendee. Anyway, we should test before you go further. It was Pam Toby from our office who said that she was having trouble with the public link. Sorry to interrupt.
All right. Um, I don't know what happened because I don't take care of the public link.
I'm gonna test it right now.
Okay. Um, I see Mary Ann Boucher, um, Boucher.
Uh, Mary Ann just messaged me saying she had no trouble getting in.
Okay, so I think we're all set. Um, thank you. So, the first order of business is the mayor's proposed fiscal 23 budget presentation to council. Before I ask councillor Memard to refer this to BNF, I'd like to say a few things and then ask Mayor Verger to, to speak on our budget. The things that I want to say is just thank you, mayor and your team for all your hard work in pulling this budget together. You were new mayor this year. You came in on board and you did a masterful job getting all your department heads working with you on pulling together the budget. It's quite a project and it was done expeditiously and, and very appreciated. And that's all I have to say right now. So right now, I'd like to ask Mayor Verger to tell council about what's in the budget packet tonight and the book that we're going to be getting and take it away and then we'll refer it to BNF. So, thank you.
Val, did you, were you able to read? Did I miss it? Or did you read the introduction about public access?
I did. Thank you.
Val, Jill just messaged me saying that the link is not working. So Mary Ann must have got in before something went wrong because Jill just tested the link.
Yeah, I just text, I just tested it and Pam tested it. I don't know if anybody else wants to give it a test. I just don't want this meeting to not count for some reason.
Okay. Um, Joanne, can you, can we call Ryan? Do you know how to do a patch of? Hmm?
I'll call Ryan.
Okay, Jill, call Ryan. And just while we're in this transition, maybe could you bring Mary Ann Boucher in and we can ask her how she got on the call? That would be great. She'll be surprised to be talking. Mary Ann, it's Val Gilman and the city council. Can you just tell us how you logged on tonight? Did you call in via phone or did you use the Zoom link that is on the website? Because we want to make sure that everybody is able to get on.
Hi, Val. I just used the link that was provided on the Gloucester website, 899-1799-6984. I don't know if anybody's looking at that. I can repeat it again if you want to write it down.
Go ahead.
899-1799-6984. And I had no trouble.
Okay, go ahead, Joanne.
So I would, I went back to my Zoom limiter that I started and that is the ID number. That is the link number. So I don't know what the problem is too. Um, because I went back to my Zoom that I started the practice session and I have the information for the link. And it's 1799-6984.
Okay, well, that's part of the number that Mary Ann used. So I'm wondering why-
That's what's on the agenda too. Whatever she, um, recited off that those are the numbers that correspond on the agenda.
Okay.
I can, let me just see if I can.
Would, would someone else like to, um, to sample what's on the city website to see if you can get on?
So I just called Ryan. He's looking into it, but there's, I just tried it on my city iPad too. And it says, you know, unable.
Okay.
That impressed me.
Ryan's looking into it and will call me right back.
Okay. I'm wondering if it's part of the technical issues that we're having on the whole city website. Um, because I haven't been getting, Jason's had like a two hour delay for some of his emails today. I know I'm not getting them right now.
That should be separate because that's an email that's related to Mimecast, our, our email system, but it should be separate, but.
It's probably Vladimir Putin.
Yeah, probably.
Geez, Scott. Um, councillor Nolan, your hand is raised.
I tried it. We can't get through. Um, this meeting might as well be canceled. Um, there's no way for a fair process that people can get in. Um, Jill's tried it. I've tried it. Pam's trying to get on. Uh, something happened. Um, I don't know what to say.
Okay, so, um, so we have to repost the meeting. Um, and we need 48 hours in advance to repost it. So, um, let's see, Thursday night is BNF. And it's the, and it would have to be Friday. We'd have to do Friday to adhere to 48 hours.
How about after BNF? Is it what's, I, I haven't looked, I haven't studied the-
It's after the close of business, Jamie. We can't, we can't, it won't be 48 hours. It's after the close of business today for, for city hall to post it. So the best we could do, I, excuse me?
It looks like it's fixed. People are coming in.
Okay.
Um, and I think in part, this is Ryan, but I think an important part about what you read is to the best of our ability. So, um, I think we haven't any business yet.
Right. I'll just start from the beginning then, but we'll wait a second for everybody to come in. Go ahead, councillor Nolan.
The only people that have come in since the issue has been staff, um, which would be the ones that would know how to get there. I'd have a hard time accepting a budget and talking about a time change on council meetings with do notice being held, um, that people may or may not have been able to get into it. Um, so, I mean, I, I would feel uncomfortable at this point going forward to meet and knowing that the only, actually right now attendees, Ryan's off. Uh, we have a Karen, but we have a Pam Toby, but how many people have been here or can't get on here that don't know the change?
Um, councillor Memard.
I would, again, I see people do coming, are coming in or one or two, but it's not, I have, I have to say that it's not atypical to have nobody in the audience at the budget presentation. And if we proceed, we can certainly repeat it, but that allows us to produce, uh, proceed with our regular business and scheduled dates. We can certainly repeat the presentation of the budget. But I, my, my suggestion, uh, in spite of what councillor Nolan has pointed out, um, would be to proceed and if necessary, repeat it.
Hello?
Um.
Tracy?
Yes, I just joined on the city website. I had to leave. I had to leave as a panelist for some reason.
Okay.
I'm an attendee right now, so.
So you, so you were able to join on the city website?
Yes, just this minute. Yep.
But I, I pulled you in as a panelist. So you're on a panelist, Tracy.
Oh, you did? Okay.
But, but, but hold on a sec. But Joanne, Tracy's point, she came on as an attendee and you brought her in.
Yeah.
Yeah, I also, I also joined, um, but on, I got my other laptop here. I also joined via that.
So you joined as an attendee?
Through the city's website, going to, you know, public notices through that route.
Okay, so-
There's a Karen that's joined?
Yes.
So, let me just summarize once more. I believe that we are receiving people, um, right now that are dialing in right now. So if I repeat what I said and we start from the beginning, I don't believe we would be in violation of holding this meeting. But if any of you are in objection, let's talk about it right now. Um, councillor Nolan, go ahead. You're unmuted.
So the link that's up now is the same exact link that was publicized?
Then why is it working?
And it's working.
All right. So if, if the link is the same as we publicly, publicly asked and promoted, then I have no problem with this at all.
Okay.
Okay.
Can we ask Karen how she got in?
Sure. Um, Karen, would you unmute yourself? Thank you. Tell us how you got in because we're troubleshooting our technology. Can you announce your name, uh, full name for us and your address? Karen? Now you're muted. Now you're unmuted. Could you introduce yourself and tell us how you got onto the call? We're trying to make sure that everyone is able to get on right now. Karen, would you introduce yourself and your name and your address and tell us how you got on if you can hear me? This is Val Gilman on the city council. Okay. So we're not hearing from Karen.
Pam texted that she did access the link that was advertised. That's how she got on, Pam Toby.
Okay. So, so I, I'm comfortable going forward right now. Um, okay. So, so let's, let's begin. Councillors, um, hold on. I'm dealing without my, great. Good evening, everyone. We're starting a few minutes late because of a technical complication, but we're back live. Um, I'd like to welcome everyone to the May 3, 2022 special city council meeting. In the interest of government transparency with regards to deliberations and decisions made by the city council in according to open meeting law, since this meeting was posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is recorded by video and audio and will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer device, there's a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. My name is Val Gilman. I'm the ward four city councillor and I'm the council president. I'd like to introduce the councillors that are on the call. Councillor Grow, councillor Memard, councillor Worthley, councillor Nolan, councillor Majota, councillor Gross, councillor O'Hara, and councillor O'Neill. There are some members of city staff that are here as well. Greg Verger, our mayor, our CAO Jill Cahill, John Dunn, our CFO, Ken Costa, our auditor, and Joanne Sinos, who is our city clerk. Right now, we have three attendees on the call as well, including Pam Toby, who is our director of constituent services. We have two items tonight. Number one is the mayor's proposed fiscal 23 budget presentation to the council. And then we will refer it to BNF. And we also have a second item, which is a very simple item, and it's just to vote on a council time to start our meetings beginning on May 24th when we go live. So it's a two item agenda. We did have technical difficulties for those of you who have been on the phone since the beginning, but we didn't start any business except to do this introduction that we just repeated. So, without that, I would just like to kick off the conversation about the mayor's proposed fiscal 23 budget presentation and just mention that the effort of our new mayor, Mayor Verger and his team has been wonderful to pull everybody together. All new department heads to all of you and to, well, not to Jill Cahill, but to, to Mayor Verger for sure. And you did a stellar job with all the details of presenting all of these budget matters that we'll be looking at in the next several weeks. So I'd like to turn the meeting over to our mayor and he can give us highlights of the points that are mentioned in our budget book that we'll be able to get tomorrow councillors at city hall. And we'll explain how the public can get it shortly. But let's hear from Mayor Verger. Welcome and thank you for presenting this book to the city council.
Uh, thank you, council president Gilman and members of the council. And I do also want to thank Jill Cahill and John Dunn and John's team for all the work they did compiling the budget and for all the department heads and their staffs for, um, you know, submitting their budgets. And, um, again, thanks to everybody. So I'm pleased to be here tonight to present my first budget as your mayor here in City Gloucester. And I see this as an exciting opportunity to invest in our community and its future while addressing several longstanding issues. From day one of this administration, I've been committed to transparency and efficiency, and I believe that that is reflected in this proposed FY23 budget. The past several years have been filled with uncertainty and hardship, and it is my hope that this budget will safeguard our city against potential disruption while improving government services and infrastructure. Over the past several years, we've seen consistent revenue growth and have invested in our reserve accounts to remain prepared for potential short or long-term uncertainties. Gloucester's economic security relies on several factors, including the overall success of the state's economy. One key highlight is the state's changes to chapter 70. This has allowed us to increase our investment in our schools and better meet the needs of our students. So along with our investment in our schools, it's important to prioritize other existing city infrastructure. My office receives an overwhelming number of inquiries from constituents regarding the state of our roads. And I know this is not a new issue, but I hope that the proposed increase to the road repair maintenance is a step in the right direction. This significant increase in the budget coupled with the proposed $300,000 supplemental appropriation for this fiscal year should significantly impact improving our public roads. It is essential that we not only invest in our existing infrastructure, but also look towards the future and possible opportunities to improve and secure our community. As you all know, we are a coastal community and we face unique challenges and need to be proactive in our response to these environmental changes. A new sustainability coordinated position within the community development team will work with city departments, boards, and community members to evaluate projects and initiatives through a sustainability and resiliency lens. The project manager position at our Department of Public Works has been in the budget, but has not been filled. We plan to fill this role to redistribute the workload and increase efficiency within the department to better serve the public. And I know you are all well aware of our upcoming 400th anniversary and the important work being done by the Gloucester 400 plus organization. My office is dedicated to supporting their meaningful work for this significant milestone, and we look forward to continue that collaboration. And our city clearly benefits from its volunteers and community engagement. And that's why I've actively engaged our city's boards, communities, and committees since day one of my administration. I'm happy to announce that we have appointed or reappointed nearly 100 volunteers, 100 volunteers to these criticals, critical boards, committees, and commissions. And their work and knowledge is invaluable, and I'm so grateful for their participation. The city relies heavily on community participation and volunteers. For example, we've been working very closely with the DPW and a number of veterans within the community to carefully relocate the Vietnam memorial that's currently located at Gloucester High School to Stage Four Park. We have relied on these engaged community members to ensure thoughtful and respectful transition to the new location. I remember the day the Vietnam memorial was unveiled at the high school in the early eighties, and I'm so appreciative of this group's engagement and participation. Recently, the city council voted to accept the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds program, a part of the American Rescue Plan. The city of Gloucester was awarded approximately $23 billion. This is a once in a lifetime opportunity. And I put together a listening group of volunteers to host public sessions throughout the city to solicit feedback from the community about potential projects and priorities. This group consists of the city's CIAB, EDIC, and the city council. And they will work to synthesize their findings and put together recommendations to share with my administration. I want to be strategic and thoughtful about the opera funding, and I will rely on the listening group to gather the public input. So, as I mentioned, creating efficiencies is a major priority for my administration. And our IT department has been a key partner within the city in this endeavor. We're fortunate to have such an innovative and motivated IT department that wants to work with our existing structures and find modern solutions to improve services. We're working to improve public access through online services like the new online beach, non-resident beach reservation system, and will continue to find new and inventive ways to better serve our community. You'll also notice an investment in two initiatives out of the human resources department. The first is a classification and compensation study of all positions within the GMAA union. And the second is an evaluation of safety and emergency preparedness across departments within the city. This to ensure that our valued city staff feels safe and secure in their workplace. Supporting these initiatives will create further transparency and improve the work environment for our city's employees. I appreciate all of the collaboration with city staff, volunteers, you members of the city council, and the school committee. I know that we will continue to improve the lives of Gloucesters residents through our work, and I'm committed to working together to achieve these goals. So I look forward to our continued partnership in the coming weeks. And this proposed FY23 budget represents a strong commitment to our citizens and to our city. And I will continue to strengthen our community and I'll proudly recommend, I'd probably recommend adoption of this budget. I wish we had the special effects that I can hand it to you, but here it is. It's, uh, you all have hard copies waiting for you at the clerk's office. And we have emailed each of you PDF of it. Tomorrow morning, by nine o'clock, we'll have it posted on the city's website. It'll be found within the mayor's section of the website. And Pam will post a link onto the city's main Facebook page. So please share it across all other pages. Um, and with that, thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, mayor. And just to add on what Mayor Verger just said, we also will provide hard copies at the library and also at the city clerk's desk when you first walk in. So members of the public that do not have technology can go and, and look at a hard copy. So what I'd like to do right now is ask councillor Memard to refer this to, um, to BNF through the motion. And then we can go through a quick summary of the budget schedule and answer any questions about the process the councillors might have. So councillor Memard, um, as BNF chair, would you make the motion to refer? Thank you.
So, so well, thank you, councillor. Thank you, council president Gilman. As BNF chair, it's my honor to state as a motion that in accordance with the Massachusetts, Massachusetts general law, chapter 44, section 32, and pursuant to the city of Gloucester's city charter, part one, section six dash one, that the city council accepts receipt of the mayor's fiscal year 2023 budget as proposed and becomes the budget of the city council and to refer this budget to the budget and finance committee, city, city council standing committee for further review. And I so move.
Second. Councillor Memard has made the motion and councillor Worthley has seconded it. Is there a discussion councillors? So this is a roll call vote. Councillor Gilman, yes. Councillor Gross?
Yes.
Councillor Grow? You're muted.
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Majota?
Yes.
Councillor Memard?
Yes, thank you.
Councillor Nolan?
Absolutely.
Councillor O'Hara?
Yes.
Councillor O'Neill?
Yes.
Councillor Worthley?
Yes.
The yeses have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. It has been referred to BNF. Thank you councillors. Before we go on to the next item of business, I just want to briefly summarize the budget schedule. On May 18th, we have our first budget session. It will all be on Zoom from 9:00 AM to 4:00. It's our smaller departments in revolving funds. On May 25th, which is our second session, 9:00 to 3:30, the larger departments, including police, fire, DPW, community development, debt service, and revenues. On May 26th, which is a Thursday, is the third budget review, and it's for the school department, and it will begin at 5:00 PM. Our public hearing is scheduled for June 7th at 6:00 PM. On, um, June 8th, we have our revisits at 9:00 in the morning. On June 14th at 5:30, we have adjustments and final motions if they are needed. On June 14th, we will have a, will conduct the passage of the fiscal 23 budget at 6:00 PM. And that is the summary of the budget schedule unless there's something that either our CFO, our city auditor, our city clerk, or, um, BNF chair would like to add to that if I missed anything. Um, Joanne, I saw that you raised your hand.
Yes. Um, well, you mentioned that the two, uh, the public hearing and the city council passage is 6:00 PM, but you're voting on tonight whether to change that time.
Okay, good point. For the in-person meetings of the full council?
Yes.
Okay.
For the city council meeting for the public hearing and also for the best passage of the budget. So to say it's 6:00 PM, if you change that to seven, um, it probably has to be revised.
Okay. Thank you for that correction. Anyone else have any questions on the budget schedule? Um, councillor Memard?
I would just like to reiterate that following your outline of the calendar of our review, review meetings, that the public are welcome to participate by attending these meetings, but they're not open for questioning at that time until a public hearing. However, any single one of us or the clerk's office is very happy to entertain any questions or concerns about departmental budget issues as proposed by the mayor's office. And we welcome you to reach out to us and we can bring those up, uh, as councillors on your behalf during the budget review meetings.
Great. Thank you councillor. Any questions for councillors, um, from councillors on this process? I will go back to the meeting that we had at BNF last week, and it was extraordinarily helpful because, um, Ken Costa and John Dunn walked us through all the steps to take during the budget process. So if you weren't able to review that, please go and watch it on Zoom. And members of the public, if you want to learn more about how this budget process works, the details, I encourage you to watch that Zoom meeting. So, thank you. So I think, um, that concludes this part of the meeting. We've successfully referred this to BNF. So I'll ask madam clerk if you would note the next order of business.
The next order of business is for council vote. City council discussion and vote on resuming 7:00 PM start time beginning at the May 24, 2022 city council hybrid meeting in accordance with the city council rules of procedure rule number one. 24, 2022 City Council Hybrid Meeting in accordance with the City Council Rules of Procedure Rule Number 1, Meetings, Section A.
Great, thank you. So just to let the council know what this is all about, we recently reviewed our rules of procedure, and we actually put some language in there, but we realized that as soon as the emergency order ended, we would be back to real in-person meetings. And one of the things that we put in that was that the need that if we change it back to seven, which we are attempting to do right now, to have in-person meetings with the public initially calling in um, on Zoom and witnessing our meetings, um, it's going to start that way, so we wanted to make sure that we would, um, that the meeting time would reflect the time that we feel like we need when we have councillors that work full-time and they need to get home, they need to shower, they need to eat, and then come to our meeting in person. So, um, we have a motion and I'd like to, to, um, to make that motion, and then we can discuss any questions that we have in the discussion. So the motion is to resume the 7:00 PM start time beginning at the May 24th, 2022 City Council Hybrid Meeting in accordance with City Council Rules of Procedure Rule Number 1, Meetings, Section A, and I so move.
Agreed.
So I made the motion, and I believe Council Nolan, that was you that seconded it? Yes, great, thank you, alright, is there a discussion, councillors? Council Grow and then Council Worthley.
I, I assume that we are going to continue with the subcommittees at the earlier time, is that the intention?
Yes, right now, we have not come up with an alternative place for this, right now, we're starting with the big meeting with our desire to get back in person. And then, as we begin, have the public zoom in, and eventually, when the technology is working well, we will invite the public to either attend or call in via hybrid, and that's our goal right now. Um, but it's all dependent on how the technology works and that we're comfortable with it. So, um, Mayor Verga, do you have anything to add to that, or is that consistent with your understanding?
It is, uh, we actually had a meeting today at, um, the DPW conference room, which wouldn't be appropriate for, for you, but, uh, it worked pretty well, um, we, we had several people zoomed in and, um, we had a camera with a remote that we could tilt, zoom in and out, and, um, so I think with that type of equipment in strategically located, uh, facilities throughout the city, we should be up and running eventually, but like you said, we want to test it out, I think it's smart that you guys are doing it at the friend room to see how that goes, and, um, baby steps, but we also don't want to stretch it out for another six or seven months.
That's great, and, and something that I, I'm gonna, um, seek, um, technical assistance on right now is possibly um, booking the lodge room all the time. Um, because that way we'll never be in a room that's too small for a good-sized group, and the technology is better upstairs, according to the folks that have been using it. And if that room is available, which we believe it is, because the library usually closes at 6:00, or they do close at 6:00, it should be open at 7:00, and I think that that will be a good decision for us. Um, but I have to confirm that with the library head and, um, Mern, um, uh, what is Mern's last name?
Simply.
Simply, um, who will, um, who chairs the board. So, anyway, so this is exciting, so we have a motion, a second, any more discussions, oh, Council Worthley, you had your hand raised, go ahead, sorry.
When I first served in the council, our meetings were at 7:30, not 7:00 o'clock, and I don't know why councillor Distino, president Distino moved them to 7:00, he did it unat- unilaterally, actually. I'd be interested to know what was the rationale to move to 6:00 o'clock? The 7:30 start was after a lot of debate because half of Gloucester worked out of town, it was hard to engage the public, even 7:00, 6:30, 6:00 seemed a little early during the dinner hour. Um, I'm flexible, I'll adjust to whatever the council wants to do, but I'd like to understand the rationale why it moved from 7:00 to 6:00. If someone could enlighten me, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, so I'll start, and, and it was based, uh, Council Nolan, so I don't do all the talking, why don't you, um, why don't you explain?
Uh, Council Worthley, when we went to 6:00 o'clock, the problem was it was during COVID. Uh, most people weren't working, they were staying at home. People were complaining about the fact that they were waiting two hours or three hours to the meeting to start. Um, so we had a discussion about it, we changed the meeting to 6:00. So people weren't waiting to have a 7:00 o'clock meeting. The 7:00 o'clock meeting, I believe Jim Distino put in there, because most people are available at 7:00, and, um, in light of the 11:30 timeframe, for longer meetings, it was one half-hour less of public communication, um, to go forth with their debates or arguments towards what's going on. Um, but the 6:00 was definitely due to COVID. Um, they had restrictions where people weren't doing anything, and they wanted to be able to get on with the movie, or the meeting, sorry, movie, and, uh, that's how we ended up with that. So, uh, going back to 7:00 is something that it makes sense to people that work uh, a regular job that is consistent of not getting out of work until 4:30, 5:00 o'clock to be able to go home and eat to meet in a public place, so, um, that being important to me as a diabetic, being able to be able to go home, shower, eat, to travel, that would be important. Um, but for most people that are back to their regular schedules now, it just seems more appropriate to go back to 7:00. Um, if we're gonna be having these meetings where people can all settle in and have things to go.
Done, thank you.
Um, Council Gross?
Uh, this is for the full council, not for any subcommittee meetings, where they're all still on Zoom, correct?
That is correct.
Confusion, okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, uh, let's do a roll call vote, Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Um, that concludes tonight's meeting. It's exciting to have the budget in our hands. As we've mentioned in our governance, there are three most important things that we do on the council. One is zoning, one is Gloucester Code of Ordinance, and the third, and most, most definitely the most important is oversight of the budget. And so now, we will be totally involved with that, and we think that the work of Scott Memard and Jeff Worthley and the Vice Chair Tony Gross, um, will, um, will do a tremendous job going through this, and we remember that the three initial meetings are also meetings of the whole, so they're posted as councillors of the whole, and that means we can attend if we're not on BNF, and we listen, and BNF does the first vetting of everything, and then at the time where it's opened up for comments, we can actually make comments, and which is really helpful, particularly if you're a ward councillor and there's just a question that you might have as a line item that you want to get more understanding about. So it's a great process, and we look forward to that, so, um, on behalf of the council, thank you, John Dunn, thank you, um, Kenny Costa and Jill Cahill and the mayor for your leadership in getting this to where it is, Council Gross has his hand raised, so before we adjourn, go ahead.
I have a question for the mayor or, um, Jill Cahill, did, Greg, you said that you had emailed us the budget?
Yes, if you haven't seen it yet, we, we, we're having, um, survey troubles, so emails in and out of the, the, uh, city's network are a little bit behind, so if you guys don't see it in the morning, reach out to the office, uh, and we'll check with, uh, Ryan, see what's cooking, but your hard copies are on Joanne's desk right now.
Yep, thank you.
And I, I, I did receive it by email, so I'm not sure why some will get it and others not.
Well, you live in Ward 1, so it must be better technology than Ward 4, and because Tony and I have not received it, so anyway.
The, the ponies will be around shortly.
Alright, is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Pony's not that short.
So, uh, Scott Memard and who is the second? Uh, Jeff Worthley, um, so we have a motion, a second, let's do a roll call to adjourn, uh, Council Gilman, yes, Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memard?
Yes, and good night.
Council Nolan?
Absolutely, you have a great night.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
And Council Worthley?
Thank you.
We have nine votes to adjourn, good night, everybody, and thank you. Thank you.